Are we ready to roll? We'll go make it quick today. Good evening, everyone. So it's five oh two on my clock. I'd like to call the EDC meeting to order. And let's start by establishing a quorum. Nelda, could you call out the role? Present.
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 Councilmember Dan Diaz.
Present.
Sabrina Walker Hernandez. Raul Resendez. And Eddie Garzen.
Present.
Thank you. So we have a quorum and also want to acknowledge we have with us our, of course, Nelda Ramirez, who is our interim executive director. And we have Myra Yala, who's joining us, city manager, and of course Omar Ochoa, our city attorney. Thank you for being with us. Let's do our pledge of allegiance, please. Let's stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nelda, did we certify the public notice that posting was done timely?
Yes, ma'am. The agenda was posted on August 26, 2022, at 3:15 PM.
Thank you. And on conflict of interest, just as a reminder.
Sure. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. If the member does have a conflict of interest, they can't participate or vote on the item. Are there any disclosures necessary?
I'd like to make a disclosure, even though I don't have a personal interest, because I'm employed by UTRGV, there's an item on the agenda today and it's the 6C. So I'm going to abstain from the discussion and the vote on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Public comments, did anybody sign up for public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And director's report.
Yes, ma'am.
Item 5A.
Just to update, our unemployment rate for July 2022 decreased by 0.8% from this period compared to July of 2021. So we had a slight decrease. We had new commercial building permits reported in July of 1.9 million. We had a total of 22 prospects that staff is currently working with on relocating, expanding, or starting new business here in the city of Edinburgh. We did start our new marketing with the shopping and with Mexico Industry. Our ad did start in the shopping this month and our Mexico MAPS ad will start in November. That will advertise all of our industrial parks and our airport and all of our property available. We would like to announce a red, white, and blue job fair. We're working with Workforce Solutions for November 10, 2022, at the Burt Ogden Arena. And this is a job fair that will be held for all of the Valley. It's intended to connect Texas veterans and their families and qualified candidates with all area employers. And so we're hoping to have a really big turnout here at the arena that day. Another job fair, we're working with Workforce as well for October for National Disability Employment Awareness Month. We're going to host a job fair and lunch and learn session for employers and residents. And that will be sometime in September. We're negotiating the days and the location for that as well. We also have staff working with city staff on the new Edinburgh 2040 committees. We will have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday and all of the chairpersons for the committees listed in the report will be meeting to discuss future plans for those committees.
Nelda, I have a question on that one. You had mentioned that the Economic Development, Innovation, Entrepreneurship, and Workforce Committee was still pending. What does that mean? Are they still looking for a chair for that?
Yes. Yes, and the city council will have that item and the government transparency. Those two are still pending chairpersons for those committees. And the council will discuss those, I believe, at the September 6 meeting.
That is correct.
And they'll look to appoint chairpersons to both of those committees.
So is that one, I mean, is there any conflict of interest or any, I guess, problem with someone, for instance, on EDC board wanting to chair that committee?
I don't believe there'll be a conflict of interest. It'd deflect to our attorney.
I mean, I don't foresee that. There's no kind of financial interest at stake, so I wouldn't see that.
Okay. I'll just bring it up in case there's someone that would like to possibly chair that committee and has a good idea of what's going on in the economic development realm here and then might be able to lead others that want to serve on that committee. So if anybody's interested, what are they supposed to do? Just fill out a form for the city? Y'all have a form?
It's through the city secretary's office.
Okay.
That is correct, yes.
And then the other one I was going to mention on the job fair, I think that's great for the veterans on November the 10th.
Yes.
I'm going to mention it to our Veterans Business Outreach Center that we also have at the university. Maybe they could participate because that also to help veterans who want to get into business.
Yes, yeah. And please let them know they can contact us and we'll coordinate with workforce.
Okay, thank you.
We have upcoming events, ribbon cuttings that we work with the chamber on attending on behalf of the city. We also have a public outreach for Highway 107 drainage project coming up, September 8. And then we have a retail live conference that Carlos Garza, our economic coordinator, will be attending on Thursday in Austin, Texas. And has several meetings lined up at that event as well. We have an opening celebration for South Texas Health System coming up, September 15. And then we're hosting an event at Renaissance Conference Center for the Latina Leadership Conference with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And then just lastly to report, the Spark Program, there was a total budget of 850,000. We have completed projects of about 25. There are about 40-plus businesses that are still outstanding to comply with that, but they have until October 1 of this year to finish their improvements. That's all I have for today.
Okay, thank you.
Nelda, I have a question. On this particular page that I'm seeing right here with the events attended and the upcoming events and things like that, I don't think I'd ever seen this page added to our agenda. Have we had it before?
The...
With the events coming up and things like that?
Oh, no.
No, right? I think this is a really good idea. Are these as far as we can, well, for the whole month of September? Or is it basically what we've got at this particular meeting?
Right. It's as far as we have planned for this meeting. And so we wanted to include it so in case there are any events that the board may wish to attend, they can and be aware of like the job fairs and conferences.
I commend you guys and the staff for adding this to this because I think it's important that we know what events are coming up so we can make plans to attend them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Makes it a lot easier.
I concur with Ernie. One of the, I forget who it was, where we had a call with staff and it was, we seemed to get a lot of requests the day before. And obviously, there's already plans in motion for us and what have you. And in order for us to be able to plan for them, it'd be nice if we just plan ahead and we get notice.
Right.
The last thing we want is to sponsor a table or something and no one's there.
Right.
Because we were told the day before or that day.
Right.
So that would be great.
We're trying to avoid that.
Please, thank you.
And plan ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, and on that note, just to piggyback everybody else, Nelda, I think it's a good idea if the city council, every Friday, we get a list of events for the following week. I'd like to see more EDC, if they're available, at the ribbon cuttings. A lot of the businesses always, you know, I think they'd love to meet the board. And when I go to these, they present me as a city councilman and then they present me as EDC. I wish there'd be somebody else there so they could talk also. But they won't go if they don't know about the ribbon cutting.
Exactly right.
Maybe we could do like we do for council, all the events the prior week.
We can coordinate with city secretary's office and get those events on our calendar as well.
That'd be good. That way I can get some use out of some suits that I have.
What Ronnie at the chamber does is they've done it and I think it really helps is they send out the calendar invite to just everybody and that way you can accept or decline or, you know, put yourself tentative if need be. And then you have a good idea of whom may be able to attend.
Yeah, we can do that.
Right. And that way whoever's available and just so that the new businesses or businesses that were doing ribbon cuttings can meet the board and you kind of just get to connect with everybody there.
Right.
On the Spark Program, actually, I met with Nelda today and everybody met with her the past weekend. We barely got to meet today. I brought up the fact that I think that if we have any funds left after the October 1 deadline, that my suggestion was to use monies for parking lots. Maybe we could help some of these existing businesses that have parking lot issues. If there's monies left after, we could have a similar program where we, this time hopefully, front the money and pay the people doing the parking lot directly. And aesthetically, that'd be a big deal, kind of go hand in hand with the city doing all the streets. And that was one of the thoughts. There was something else I wanted to mention.
And that falls within the requirements, right, of the funding?
Yes.
That was the parking lots that would qualify?
Well, it's, right, it's parking lot within their business. So if it assists their business, it would qualify.
Okay.
And there was something else, but I don't remember right now.
It's that time of the day. Thank you, Nelda. Any other questions on the report? And so now we have the board meeting minutes for August. If y'all had a chance to review the minutes, can we get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for August 1, 2022.
Second.
All in favor, say aye or raise your right hand. Minutes are approved. And now we have item 6B, discuss and consider approval of a small business loan program proposal submitted by Lift Fund. And that is in your packet, I think, under the, let's see. At the red tab there? Yep. The red tab there. And do we have any guests on that one?
Yes, ma'am. We have representatives for the Lift Fund. If you'd like to approach the podium, they will present on a small business loan program proposal that we've been working with them on.
Good evening. My name is Mishi Brunz Clay and I'm the regional vice president for Lift Fund for East Texas and the coastal region. Thank you so much for having us here today. I'd also like to...
Marlene Rodriguez, Business Development Officer for Lift Fund.
Thank you.
So would you like for us to just go through the proposal? Have you had a chance to read it? Or so Lift Fund is a community development financial institution. We've been in Edinburgh serving businesses since 1998 to the tune of almost $65 million in terms of impact to small businesses. So today, we're here to present a proposal for an interest buy down program, so a loan program. There are two options that you can see on page two. And so we're just here to answer any questions as it relates to the logistics, you know, related to the interest buy down program or any concerns or questions that you may have.
I had a question on, I mean, I think it's a great program. It gives our small businesses an opportunity to really get a hand up. Does it only apply to startups or does it apply also to existing businesses that may want to expand?
Both.
To both, okay.
To both.
And what happens? So we do a buy down and that means that you mentioned here 25 businesses with 0% interest we could serve with 100,000 or 56 small businesses. And the business would pay a 5% interest rate on it. And so how long typically are the loans? And then what happens if the small business defaults?
So depending on the loan size actually determines the term of the loan. So for, you know, in this example, a $20,000 loan, the term would be 48 months. And then we have a full delinquency department. So we have a collections department that monitors any delinquencies, any defaults. So we have a repayment rate right now to 96%. So we do a pretty good job of making sure that we stay on top of that. And then we also provide business support. So we're constantly, after we give them the loan, we're constantly providing technical assistance, checking on them, giving them grant opportunities and helping them with their business plan, helping them scale and grow. So we don't just lend them the money and then leave them there. We really are very intentional about making sure that they are sustainable businesses. And so that also helps with the delinquency rate as well.
So I work at the university and we have a Small Business Development Center. And I know that they work with various lenders on helping small businesses to get loans. Do y'all also work with the SBDC? Okay, great. And what is your average size of a loan?
So our average size just across our 15-state footprint is about 26,000. So you would be right there in terms of, you know, a good average loan size. So we lend, in our total, in our total portfolio, we lend from $1,000 up to 5.5 million, depending on, you know, the product that's offered. But yes, our average loan size for microloans.
How many months do they have? What are the options on the months to repay the loan?
So 48 months would be the term for the loan size of 20,000.
Any requirements on how they can use the loan?
You want to address that?
Sure. As far as the requirements on the uses of funds, it could be utilized for working capital, to hire employees, if they want to purchase a piece of equipment for their business, to grow their business, as long as the proceeds are utilized for business purpose. And in regards to the terms, we can go up to 60 months, which is five years. But normally, on a $20,000 loan, the maximum would be 48. But if a customer wants, if they're looking for 50,000 or 40,000, the max that we can do on that is 60 months on a microloan.
Can it be used like for renovations to the brick and mortar?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I just want to clarify because Veronica said brick and mortar. It has to be a brick and mortar business. It can't be a home-based business, correct?
We do lend out to home-based businesses. If there's a business that has their business registered and they're doing a service, if they have, they meet with a client, not necessarily have to meet with the client at their home, but they use an office space or Starbucks to meet the client, then they can have their business registered at home. We will do the due diligence as far as making sure that the applicant, the business is registered, making sure that they're current with their ad valorem tax, making sure that they are current with their sales tax in the event that they have.
Is there a revenue requirement in terms of the size of business to ensure that their debt to income and they're able to pay it back? And that put them in a deeper hole?
Yes, we do verify financials. We want to make sure that the applicant has the 1.25 to cover income ratio in order for them to be able to repay that loan. So we do take a look at financials. We want to make sure, do the whole diligence, review the financials, make sure that they have the capacity and the ability to repay back that loan.
And just to add to that, we have our own proprietary risk model that includes 44 different risk mitigating factors that we look at before approving a loan.
You mentioned that you had been working with Edinburgh for some time. And so do you, can you give us a number of like how many businesses in Edinburgh you've been able to help?
Actually, in terms of the businesses that we've been able to help, it's 207 new jobs were created and 569 were actually jobs that were retained. And then in terms of the number of actual businesses is around 250. But in terms of the demonstrated need for businesses in this area, it's almost 9 million.
Okay.
So what we looked at was, excuse me, my allergy is horrible. What we looked at was how many loan applications we denied and actually also approved to actually give you a demonstrated need. So the demonstrated need since 1998 has been almost $9 million.
Nine million?
$9 million of actual small businesses that have requested funding for their small businesses, 9 million.
So do you think that if we were to do, because I mean, personally, I always think it helps when people have skin in the game, right? So if we were to say we want to help 56 businesses, you don't think there would be a problem in finding 56 businesses to help?
Not at all. And actually, Marlene has been, you know, part of this community and worked with Lift Fund for almost 21 years. So she could probably speak to that more so than I, but absolutely not. And we would, you know, develop a landing page, work with the community partners. We do that in other cities as well. And we don't have a problem deploying the funds.
So help me understand how it works. So just as an example, if we, just for the math, $100,000, we donate, $100,000 sponsor, and you distribute that to the local businesses, right? And then they're charged a 5% interest fee on that. As they're paying it back, the principal, whose principal is it?
So Lift Fund is the grant administrator. So we are actually administrating the loans or the underwriting, the technical assistance. Everything regarding the loan product is being managed by Lift Fund?
You get 100% of it back? You, Lift Fund, through administration?
So the $100,000 is not, it's not a one-to-one ratio in terms of, the $100,000 is for lending capital. The $100,000 is for the interest buy down to buy down the rate from our standard rate to that 5% or from our standard rate to that 0%. So the $100,000 is really only buying down that interest rate?
We're investing in the interest, not the principal?
Correct, correct. So you're buying down the interest rate to make it more affordable and to make these loans more accessible to small businesses.
So the average rate would have been like 9%, I think I saw in your materials. And you're buying it down to either, we're either buying it down to 0 or we're buying it down to 5%.
Right. But the actual capital that's being lent is capital, is Lift Fund's capital. And so we're managing that loan program. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
And do you provide a report back to us of the businesses that you've helped? How many jobs were created or how many jobs were retained, et cetera?
We absolutely do. And that could be, you know, on whatever frequency you feel is necessary. Please let it be at least monthly and not like weekly. But yeah, anything from monthly to quarterly, absolutely. And then at the end of the year, you do get a full impact report of everything, everything that was spent, all the jobs created, all the jobs retained, how many were in the LMI community, how by gender, if they're veterans. And so you get all that information on an annual basis.
In order for these businesses to qualify, do they have to have a minimum number of employees?
Normally, what we have been doing in the past for the city of McAllen is as long as the small business owner is in the position of creating at least one new job within the next 24 months, they can go ahead and be able to qualify for the 0%. So they are asked to at least create at least one new job.
And the $100,000 that is proposed would be for a year?
Yes.
Okay. And so we could ask for a quarterly report, for instance, and then we could see that if it's working or not working and then whether renew or not renew after the end of the year?
Hardly.
Okay. And as long as you meet the 56 jobs, I guess that's, if we were to say 5% interest, as long as they meet the 56 jobs and you've met your end of the deal and...
Correct.
And what happens if you don't?
That's a good, I was just going to ask really the pleasure of this body because we could look at it in terms of the number of loans or we can also look at it in terms of how many, you know, in terms of deployment, like up to the 500,000. So there's a lot of different ways to look at it. It really depends on what's more impactful or considered more impactful for you.
For the community.
Yeah, for the community. Yeah, absolutely. Does that make sense? So it could be, because to Marlene's point, if someone comes and says, you know what? I need 21,000 for a really good reason. We don't, what we've done or what we've tried to stay away from is making it too restrictive. So if you have someone that needs 25,000 or 20, you know, or 30,000 and it's for a really good reason and it's going to help the community and help the business owner, we would like to be able to still do that loan. However, then the number from 56 may change from 56 to 52 because we lent that one business an extra 5,000. Does that make sense?
How will the program be marketed in Edinburgh?
So we have, very similar to what we do in other cities, we have a landing page. So they'll be able to be driven to the landing page. We work with the chambers as well. We work with the community partners. We do email blasts to the different organizations. We also have an office, you know, in McAllen so they can come in and actually do the application there as well. So on the landing page, they can apply, it goes straight through there.
And the reason why I ask, there's a big, large group that did not make the cut on the Spark that you would think that would be a great resource of folks to at least call and inform them of the opportunity.
Right. And we would do outreach also, yeah. And work with ECN and our communications and media department to also push the program.
Yeah, because I think a lot of people still not necessarily go onto a website to look to see what might be available. But word of mouth is always, works really well. And I think also if you put it on the TV or even sometimes when you put something in a bill, you know, you send out a water bill or you send out something and you put about a new program that's available to small businesses. Chamber, of course, also puts out a lot of blasts, email blasts and so forth that might be helpful.
I know that in the last program when we had the Spark Program, staff did a great job in contacting businesses personally, where they would go visit, you know, personally to businesses. I think a good start would be those that didn't get to make the cut for the Spark. To go start with them and then follow up. And I think that would be, that would be right, that would be in the right direction.
And we're totally open. If you have a list that you'd like for us to push it out to as well, we can certainly partner to do that. And not to embarrass Marlene, but on the drive over here, she was proposing to take one of her days off to go and do block walking and actually hand out flyers. So not shy in that area. We meet them where they are and we make sure that they understand that there's a fabulous opportunity that you guys are providing.
Well, I think in this era of scams and what have you, I think it's important from a letterhead perspective to include, you know, EDC on there. You just send something to Lift Fund, most folks are going to throw it away because of our environment of scam.
Yep.
So I think so. We've got to do a better job.
Yeah, and I think...
Coordinating between EDC and Lift Fund if we're going to do it.
Yeah, and we have a very good relationship with our partners. So once we launch, we were to launch this program, it's going to be, and small businesses have been waiting. I've had requests from Edinburgh, small businesses that become aware of what we're doing in McAllen. And they're like, why not Edinburgh? Okay, so once they know, once we send out and let our community partners know, I'm sure it's going to be a successful program. And it's going to be a great help for that small business. um, I'm sure it's gonna be a successful program, and it's gonna be a great help for that small business.
Well, I think it's good to make sure they understand, this is not like a payday loan type of entity. You're not gonna cha- charge excessive interest or, and that's why I was asking what happens if somebody defaults. If somebody was to say, you know what, I I do have intentions of paying back the loan, but I need a little bit more time, will you work with them to extend the payout?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And it goes on their credit bond, so that can help them as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
Hey, thank you, any other questions? Thank you, so if uh if y'all are comfortable with it, um, what what are y'all's thoughts in terms of the two options that have been presented here today? One is a buy down of zero interest and the other is a buy down of where the company or the business pays five percent interest.
Um, I think, Nelda, what's the budget that we have left in the budget for that and what's staff's recommendation?
We have ARPA funds available of forty-eight thousand seven eighty-one, but we would need to have, it was presented to council last meeting to reappropriate it for this type of program, and we would have to take it back to council for formal approval. Uh, but that money is available for this type of program. And so we would propose, starting with that amount, uh, and then an additional fifty-one, a little over fifty-one thousand on uh workforce funds from the EDC budget to add up to the one hundred thousand to start the program.
I just answer, just for some clarity, um, a five percent business loan in today's environment is is awesome. So I think we're skin in the game, that you talked about. I think if we can help more businesses at a five percent interest rate, that's a win for any business today.
Yeah, it's a no-brainer.
Versus going down to zero.
You get double, you can impact double the business if you have five percent.
Well, and I think it also makes sure that not just everybody applies because it's a zero interest, but the people that are serious about what they're gonna do with these funds.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so uh then is anyone comfortable making a motion to uh apply the forty-eight thousand seven eighty-one in ARPA funds and then uh with the EDC funding the remainder up to a hundred thousand uh to fund fifty-six businesses?
At five percent?
At five percent.
I'll make the motion as communicated.
Second.
All in favor, say aye or raise right hand?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please help all those businesses. Okay, uh, I'm gonna turn over the mic now to to Roland uh on item C that deals with UTRGV.
Thank you. Uh, item six C, uh, discuss discuss and consider approval of the renewal of UTRGV Technical Assistance Contract for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Yes, sir, this is a renewal contract, our current contract ends September thirtieth of this year. Uh, it's a renewal contract that will begin October first for one year running through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Um, and the renewal rate is the same at fifteen thousand dollars for the year. And this includes all of the data information uh systems uh uh preparation that the university provides. And this includes uh economic uh impact studies um and any other survey work, any other studies that the university uh can provide for us. Would you use them often?
So, Nelda, I see the, it says only thirty hours per quarter, so that's average of ten hours per month at about five thousand dollars a month?
It 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 has limits and parameters in here, but we've never run past any of those. They will always provide, um, and I think it's because we we use them, you know, if it's monthly, uh, we may use them some months more and other months we don't, and so they average it out, and so we've never gone past uh an overage of the contract.
Now, then I think you had mentioned also that if we were to request one of these studies individually, you know, every so often, I think the cost is a bit more, correct?
That's correct, and I don't have the exact cost per study, but they would, we would have to request it. I think it's about maybe, it used to be about fifteen hundred, more or less per study, and so um or maybe, yeah, more or less than that, uh, so it would be costly. Because we do request them for each of our projects that we present at each meeting, um, and so uh they're they're good to evaluate pro- projects uh.
Nelda, what's the last one that was done, just as an-
Our last meeting.
As an example, which, what was one of the-
Our last meeting, we had a uh economic impact study on uh Xavi's Two Plazas.
Okay.
We had one done on the plaza on University with Jersey Mikes. Um, and then we had another one done um on one that we discussed in executive session.
Is that, is that, do we get access to that, to look at those?
Yes.
Because it's not presented at the meetings, correct?
Um, sometimes we include them in the staff recommendations, if we have them within the timeframe, um, and other times we'll discuss them verbally.
And and so that that amount, because I see one twenty-five an hour, so you're saying that it would be much more expensive if we just did the studies when we need them or paid for them? And is that one twenty-five dollar an hour after the contracted rate or is that the going rate?
Um, I think that's after the contract rate. Because anything that goes past what is included in our contract, then um we would pay at that rate. But if somebody who does not have a contract, because I've experienced that, I've worked with them in the past when I was not with the city, uh, we did have to uh uh order one, like an impact study separately, and I I believe it was about fi- a thousand to fifteen hundred per study.
Per study? Wow. And um, yeah, I have this kind of question for Carlos, for our Las Vegas convention, did you use a lot of this information, Carlos?
Board member Dan, yes, yes, we did.
Yeah.
When we were at ICC and now even Retail Alive, we use a lot of this information to be ready to talk to prospects.
Right, wi- without access to this, would would you say it'd be really difficult to be able to do what we do?
Oh, of course, thi- this minimizes staff time to use uh use their efforts for other things like finding leads and prospects, uh, instead of calling, you know, counties and looking at city numbers and each department, instead now we have a consolidated like uh program where we can find data and just use it to contact leads.
And your access to this information, is it, uh, how do you, how do you request it? How does, what's the process in getting the info?
So for this, for this specific one, which is for the fiscal impact analysis, this is just a clear uh conversation with UTRGV where we just send an email uh with the specific information regarding like data, like capital investment, jobs, and they prepare the forms for us with a quick turnaround times in like three to five days. So we were able to use that and be able to present during these meetings the benefits of these projects.
And and so this kind of information is 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 uh liquid, right? It changes month to month, it's not something like if we get it one time, we can use it across the board?
I'm sorry, I didn't-
It it changes, so we need up-to-date information constantly?
Correct, and so just to add also for the, for example, for Buxton, we always have different demographics, we have different households, different mobilitics. So these numbers allow us to be quarterly updated and be known, so we can talk to the prospects. And which we did at Retail Alive with uh Dutch Bros and and also other companies like uh um the Cl- Cliff Golf and-
Yeah, and and so I'm glad you mentioned Buxton, because if I would have mentioned Buxton, then council would have given me a funny look, but so how does this work in conjunction with Buxton? And explain what Buxton does that this does not do, because we're gonna connect those two today.
Council member, I do believe that we are gonna speak about the item.
We haven't, uh, the next item is on the Buxton proposal.
I I know, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Okay.
So how 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 uh how is it that they, do they work together? Is it two different, completely different sets of information?
So the fiscal impact analysis for UTRGV uh is a separate uh program from Buxton. The Buxton AI program allows us to use three different uh areas, which is the match, uh, which allows us to use retails to match them comparing to Edinburgh. Then we have Scout, which is a map visualization to be able to see traffic counts, demographics, and different types of uh information in regards specifically to the city area. I mean, I was even able to search up the charging stations all around the Rio Grande Valley with that information. So we're able to see that City of Edinburgh only has two charging stations compared to the Rio Grande Valley. And which is one of the reasons why we did research, so we can tell these prospects, this is what we need here.
Okay, that's all I had.
And so the impact study, just to to go back to that, um, tells us how much indirect impact a business we're evaluating to to uh consider for incentives. It'll give us how much direct impact based on their jobs and capital investment, and an indirect impact is to what their investment to our city will bring as far as, um, you know, putting a shopping center, you'll bring people from other parts of this, other cities, surrounding cities to that area. And so that's buying, shopping and uh and being here in the city.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other further further questions?
Yep.
Okay, at this time I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries with one abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, I hand it off to you, Nelda.
Thank, thank you, Roland. And now that you've approved it, I I do want to add that de- that department um falls under my division. Um, and y'all know Ron Garza very well, he oversees that, but if you were mentioning Buxton, that's our next item, item D. Um, and maybe Carlos or Nelda can answer this, but Buxton helps you define the leads in a sense, right? To um who might be attracted to Edinburgh and and then the reasons why, and then once you have companies that are interested, you can get an impact report from the university to say, if this company were to come, this is the number of jobs we think would be created by the company, this would be the direct impact, this would be the indirect impact.
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Madam Chair, correct, we're able to see, and I I provided some examples of what we uh took out today. These are match reports that are gonna be used for Retail Alive to understand what companies should be looked at whenever we're going to find prospects. Now, of course, we're still able to go and reach out to any company, but these specific ones, according to data, are ideal for Edinburgh customers, Edinburgh household, and the type of uh people that these companies are looking for.
And the other thing, um, I know that you can get from SI over at uh at the university is census data. So you could get uh demographic data that then you can plug into Buxton, I guess, i- is that right?
Madam Chair, with uh Buxton, we're able to get census data and additionally, SI can be as a resource for census data as well. So we have those two sources.
Okay. So the the uh handout that you provided for us was um from Buxton that they did trying to find a match, basically.
Correct.
Which um I guess food restaurants or uh stores, retail stores would fit within our area, is that right?
That's that's correct, Madam Chair.
And the Buxton contract is thirty-five thousand a year, is that right?
The renewal contract is for thirty-five and it's for a twelve-month period.
For a twelve-month, okay. And y'all have been using Buxton for how long?
We've been using Buxton on and off since probably about twenty thirteen um in various capacities, because there's, they, Buxton is a a large company that can do different um uh services, they can provide different services. And so they can either be the person that goes out and 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 um acts on our behalf to retailers. Um, in this case, our contract, and that's for a larger amount per year. Um, in this case, the contract that we we would be renewing is we would have access to all of their information to be able to go and contact those retailers directly.
I see, okay. So they have like a platform that you go on to, you have access to, and then you can plug in your info and figure out which businesses have the-
So I have a question, Carlos, so based on the leads that um we've uh received from from Buxton, how many businesses have we signed up? Or how many, how many of those businesses have come into the city of Edinburgh?
Uh, that's that's a good question, so we do have a list of retailers that we've reached out at ICC, at retail events. And what I could do is that I could provide that list to you uh via email, uh, so you could see who we reach out to, how many times we reach out to them, how we reach out via email, phone call, um, and we, you can see like the efforts we do to constantly uh do that. So we host meetings and we do, uh, I know with ICC, we hosted a lot of meetings through the Buxton report, so.
So I think, if I get you right, we're trying to figure out return on the investment, so would you say that um ten businesses that we've attracted or over a certain period of a year or so, I mean, I'm just throwing out a number, but have come because of Buxton leads? Could you name a few, for instance, that maybe have, we have approached because of Buxton?
Yes, so during the Buxton, during ICC, we actually used uh Buxton for the reach of all the meetings that we had. This included Autozone, this included Dutch Bros, this included Jersey Mikes, this included, there's other names also that I can list of meetings that we held where we provided reports to these companies about our demographics, about our household sizes, about our traffic counts, so that they can be able to see the kind of activity that's going on in the city of Edinburgh.
And so to add to that, um, not only leads, but we will, any prospects that we're meeting with, we can pull demographic information and information from the Buxton website. Um, so some, many of the shops you see at the JCPenney, at the at the shops at Rio Grande Valley on Trenton, uh, a lot of those, we sat in meetings with First Hartford and worked with them, provided them information from the Buxton studies to help attract some of those businesses, um, and many other retailers. And there's several prospects that, you know, we can't name uh right now because they're ongoing negotiations, but there's several uh that we can provide information to you on.
I I remember, Buxton is out of New York, correct?
It's Fort Worth, Texas.
Yeah.
Buxton's from Fort Worth.
First Hartford's out of New York.
No, there there was um somebody, an- another marketing uh contract that we decided about three years ago.
That was website.
That was website.
That was website.
That was website, that's not Buxton, okay.
Oh. The website design?
Yes.
So without Buxton, it would make it much harder to do your job in terms of attracting businesses or looking for leads?
It would make it harder and probably, um, yeah, it would, it would uh we would have to contract somebody and outsource that anyways to get the information to be able to to talk to these leads.
So so basically, they just give us a better idea of what would be uh-
Who to go after?
Who to go after, yes.
Who would be a match for the city?
Go after, it's it's, but what Buxton does is gives us a resume of the city to provide it and entity we're going after.
Right.
That's correct.
And what is needed, yeah.
It's who Edinburgh is based on their research, and that allows us and the team to uh have a credible conversation with these folks that that allows them to say, you know, Edinburgh is on the game, let's let's do it in light of the research they provide.
We've been meeting a bowling alley here in Edinburgh, I still don't see it on the list, so I guess somebody's missing a book.
Big bowler Ronnie.
I second that, I I'm not a bowler, but the requests for bowling alleys are-
Well, if you saw, um, Brownsville Star opened up a main event, and they have the big bowling alley as part of that. Um, and it was a um developer out of Dallas, I think, that they used for that. Yeah, we're working on it.
We need pickleball.
Oh, that's the new thing, yeah.
Pickleball will start within the next month.
Any other questions for Nelda or Carlos on Buxton? Um, well, I entertain a motion to renew the contract for thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, the annual contract with Buxton.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, all approved, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos.
Let's see. And the next one is on item E, discuss and consider approval of the Edinburgh Economic Development Corporation sponsorship policy. And I think um you received an updated policy, the updated policy via email from Nelda this past week.
Yeah, so we we uh wanted to make sure and route it to everyone to be able to review, because I know that there was some specific uh parameters we wanted to include in the policy. There was one change I know that was recommended as far as an agreement to be put in place, and after discussing with our attorney, he recommended it's a one-page agreement and it's it's uh to have standard language in there. So uh we went ahead and and left that language in there, but it's not a formal, you know, three-page agreement, it's it's a one-pager.
Nelda, if if I remember correctly, up to a thousand dollars can be approved by you, right? No, the, if, if I remember correctly, up to a thousand dollars can be approved by you, right? As the executive director?
Executive Director, yes.
And then a thousand, or five thousand would have to come to our EDC board, and then anything above five thousand would go to the, to the council?
And the board, right.
And the board?
That's correct.
And the, the um, there was a clause in there about indemnification and insurance. So if it's a small sponsorship for, let's say, well, I guess any event. So let's say that the chamber is holding an event, uh, and it has to do with economic development. It's a public affairs luncheon, and you sponsor at seven fifty or something along those lines. You, would that still be required, or would the chamber have to show that they've got insurance and that we're indemnified? I mean, why would we need indemnity if, if it's not something that we're providing?
Just to be clear, that we're not responsible for anything that happens at the event that we're sponsoring. Uh, and that, that's part of the one-pager, uh, is a clear indemnification provision.
That's a great question. I, 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 a little different angle on that, on that uh, conversation. I, I want to make sure we're approving events that we're able to attend. Not just pay for the table and no one goes. And so how do we manage through that? Because I know we sponsor a lot of stuff and we're not available because it's right there and then, or what have you, so. If we sponsor a Chamber of Commerce table, we should have enough time to reach out to members who can attend and represent, and then when we get a full table, say, okay, we should sponsor that one. Not just sponsor to sponsor and then find out if we can fill it. How do we work through that?
Well, we'll, we'll uh, work, as we mentioned earlier, as part of the calendar invites, and make sure everybody's aware prior, and, and confirm with everybody that same day as well. And if, for whatever reason, somebody can't make it that had confirmed, then we'll, we'll try and fill it with maybe city staff or EDC staff, whoever it may be.
And what would y'all, how, how would y'all feel about this? Because we run into this problem all the time at the university. We'll sponsor events, people say they're gonna go, then they can't go at the last minute or something, right? And so we're herding cats, trying to find people to make sure that the table's full. But I also think it's, it's helpful when we have people that are um, you know, legislators, or we get people that are, are donors at the university, and we say, would you like to attend? Because we're still filling the table, and then we're doing another service to those who have been supportive of us, right? So if, for instance, we find that we can't attend, and there's not city staff that, you know, are at the level that really they're gonna get something out of the luncheon, that we offer it to businesses in the city. Or we offer it to um, you know, some of our, our legislators who we're later gonna go and ask for, you know, funding. Uh, or things like that, I mean, would y'all be okay with something along those lines?
We can do that now, as we stand, don't, can't we? Like uh, if we have a table and, and uh, you know, we can't go, or we know nobody's gonna go, we say, you know what? This person uh, is interested in going. Uh, we can do that as, as it is now, I mean, I don't think we have any restrictions as to we can do that.
I mean, I just think it, that way, your table doesn't go empty, but it is also, you're doing something to um, to steward the relationship with people that are important to the city and, and that have brought jobs here and stuff along those lines that are important economic development. Certainly, you can do that. Are y'all comfortable with the uh, levels, the thousands, up to a thousand, executive director up to five thousand comes to us, and then beyond that, it would come to us and the city? All right, well, um, if everybody's comfortable, I'll entertain a motion to approve the sponsorship policy as discussed. I make a motion to approve the sponsorship policy as discussed?
Second.
All in favor, say aye, or raise your right hand. It's approved, thank you, Nelda. Uh, next item is uh, consider the budget, the twenty twenty-three budget, item F.
Yes, ma'am, um, we are proposing the, the budget attached in the packet. Um, a lot of the items are carried forward with the same budget uh, amounts that we have for this current fiscal year. You'll see the first uh, column uh, labeled fiscal year twenty twenty-two amended is the current year, this current year's budget. Um, the next column is a year-to-date uh, through the end of July. Those are all the expenses and revenues through the end of July. And then the last column is the proposed uh, budget for next fiscal year. And so just to start off, uh, our sales tax revenue, we have a current budget of seven point seven million. We've estimated uh, sales tax revenues to be received through the end of September to end around eight point four million estimated. And so on this city's uh, budget, we are estimating, we have had an average of about fifteen to sixteen percent growth the last three years. And so we're budgeting conservatively, conservatively on the city's side of a seven percent increase. And so we did the same with the EDC sales tax. Um, so based on the eight point four million that we're expecting to receive this year, we're increasing that for next fiscal year by the seven percent to, to nine million for next fiscal year. Uh, we have included interest on investments, and that is a larger number from this current year of ten thousand to fifty, fifty thousand. And that's because of bond monies that we are currently uh, holding for future projects. And so that is bearing interest um, in those accounts. Of course, rental income and, and then transfer in for the bond, bond projects, which is that bond money uh, that we are going to use for, for projects this next fiscal year. Um, on the expense side, we have uh, budgeted salaries, um, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, and that's for uh, an executive director, um, and possibly uh, four to five uh, new employees with all of the benefits. And um, next contractual services, we have budgeted um, the staffing services agreement, a, a proposed amount of five hundred thousand, and that's to continue services with the city of Edinburgh. Uh, professional services, um, that would include engineering fees and, and uh, other professional service fees, our audit and CPA services, uh, bond fees, rents and contractuals, um, and then office-based lease. And that office-based lease is a, a estimate based on five thousand square feet at the going uh, uh, current market rate of about a dollar ten a square foot. And so that's what that sixty-six thousand represents. Supplies and equipment, those are all uh, basically the same amounts as this current fiscal year um, carried over, uh, including utilities, uh, phone expense uh, for any new uh, office space that will be leased. Under programs, uh, we've carried over uh, all of the same small business program, workforce training, um, marketing, sponsorship, research, and small business grants program. Um, that one was uh, we, we did not have a budget for this fiscal year, but it was left in in case the board wanted to uh, consider uh, an amount for that, that program. Under properties, that has all uh, basically carried over. They've been adjusted a little bit based on what we expect to expense this next fiscal year. We did have, it was, it was a little high last year on property taxes due to um, uh, an occurrence that we had, and so that's been adjusted down, uh, but the, the rest remains uh, the same. Under projects, uh, economic development centers, we have an amount in there budgeted for any new projects. And then all of the projects that have been approved and are under contract are also listed with those amounts. Under bond projects, uh, we have the amounts listed for those identified bond projects um, that still are remaining to be uh, constructed and expensed probably throughout this next fiscal year. And then all of the bond payment, interest, and uh, debt service. So uh, you look at total revenues over expenses, we've adjusted the numbers, so it's a balanced budget. We are estimating an end fund balance for next fiscal year at eleven million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, nine fifty. That does include uh, all of the bond monies.
So, uh, and I, I thank you, because I know that y'all put a lot of time and effort into kind of speculating, not speculating, but making educated guesses on what these amounts would be. Is there any wiggle room here? I, I know you were trying to be real conservative, but is there any wiggle room? For instance, if we were to um, need more money for incentives? Because we have, because we've seen that more and more entities are coming to us seeking incentives and, and with the overall goal of creating a lot of jobs here. And, and so um, you've got five hundred thousand in there. Is that um, is that reasonable considering the number of businesses that have been coming to us? Or, because if we needed to do more, are we, is there anywhere else that we could pull from?
So we budgeted five hundred thousand for any new projects, and that's because uh, usually if an incentive is uh, uh, approved to a business, it's usually over a period of time. And so you normally wouldn't have such a, a large amount per business per year. Um, but if the board wished to, you know, approve something that was larger than that, we do have other monies uh, under other line items, such as purchase of property um, that the board reserved for future land purchases that could be used for incentives in, in lieu of uh, land purchase.
Also, I have a um, question, um, with regards to rental space, uh, we might be needing some rental space, have we budgeted for that?
Yes, sir, it's under office-based lease, under contractual services on the first page. That's at sixty-six thousand. Um, and, and that's a rough estimate based on five thousand square feet. Um, that is what we hope will be temporary office space uh, for this next fiscal year.
And uh, for instance, um, the attorney uh, services, is that in here in any, is that under the contractual services?
It's included under contractual administrative services, that five hundred thousand, it's part of that agreement with the city. Legal is part of that contract.
What was the significant decline in tax property taxes, is there a reason for that?
We had a property at North Industrial Park, if you recall, last year, that we uh, reclaimed that property, and there was some back taxes that was due, and so it was about two hundred thousand that had to be paid. Um, we did receive the property back, but we had to pay those back taxes, and that's why it was so high last year.
Okay.
So no, no surprises that we were anticipating for this time around. I mean, the, we've got a good grasp on all the properties we have, and the taxes are current, and we're just now paying yearly.
And if you recall, uh, the board authorized doing some title searches on all of the properties that we own, and so those, the majority have come back and we have had no issues.
Now, the, the two million on the parking garage?
Yes. That's under uh, bond projects on page two. There's seven million, Ace Center and Parking Garage is two million. That's a, uh, also a joint project with the city.
That was the number we had there for the parking garage, but I don't remember that.
Yeah, the EDC's portion was two million, the city's portion was a little bit larger.
And um, would, is the purchase of property, is that line item also uh, for the building of our, of our?
No, the, the development center that was being proposed would be coming out of Bond Project Workforce Resource Center, that one point eight.
Oh, I see.
By four million. Um, and the purchase of property that you're seeing of the two million, seven sixty-nine is uh, the monies identified, uh, we, we had to adjust it down a little bit to be able to have a balanced budget, but that was monies that the board wanted to use for any future land purchases if uh, if that came up.
And after that, uh, the projected is positive eleven million at the end of all that?
And that's eleven point six million, but that includes bond money, and that's why that's such a high amount.
Do you know what we used for uh, travel training and meetings this past year? Did we use that whole budget?
Uh, yes, that's under six thousand four forty-four as of July, twenty twenty-two. Six thousand four forty-four, yes.
So there's a little bit of a cushion there.
Yeah.
That's what it looks like. And, and conferences as well.
Oh, we did, right.
That's all we did.
But, but yeah, I think you're right, and I think we moved that somewhere else, I don't think we used it all for.
Any other questions for um, Mr. Amidis? I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget as discussed. I make a motion to approve the budget as discussed?
Second.
All in favor, say aye, or raise your right hand. That's unanimous vote, thank you, Nelda, thank you for working so hard on that budget, I know it took a lot of time. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, uh, the next items is, it's executive session, so item number seven. Uh, so at this time, we are going to, uh, I'll take a motion to move into executive session.
I make a motion to move into executive session.
A second.
Thank you, okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're gonna move into executive session.